I'd like to bring this meeting to order. It's 5:07. Hold call, please.
Mr. Barner.
Here.
Mr. Blackstone.
So.
Mr. Farmer.
Here.
Mr. Schares.
Here.
Mr. Warren.
Yeah.
Mr. Miller. Mr. Davis.
President. I'd like to ask, are there any items to be added to the agenda? Here are none, I need a motion for the approval of the agenda.
No move.
I have a motion for the approval in a second. Do we have any discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Excuse me, animals in business. Presentation of the FY2019 to FY2000 county budget. Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Adjust the screens so our audience can get a little bit better look. Okay. So today is the official presentation of the proposed 2020 budget. Just to get started, there's nothing big in here. There's no new taxes, there's no really new grant initiatives unfortunately. It's a conservative approach, but one does, one that does deserve some amount of presentation. So contrary to last year, I'm not going to make you sit and listen to me for an hour. I think we can do it in 58 minutes. I'm just kidding. Generally speaking, it is a fairly flat financial picture. There's no tax increase proposed. We have had some modest revenue growth. Most of that has been in the personal property category, which is interesting. And we lost some revenue, a considerable amount, I think, $150-plus thousand in machinery and tools. Well, I talked to both Commissioner and Revenue and Ms. Vanderheide as recently as a few hours ago, and our opinion is this is just general depreciation. We've not added a lot of M&amp;T on the books this past year, but that stuff does depreciate fairly rapidly. The increased real estate taxes could correlate to the increase in the property tax rate last year, and we may or may not have realized the full extent of that. There's not been significant real estate growth in the county over the past 12 months. We still continue to keep an eye on our fund balance situation. As you know, our goal was to maintain a fund balance of about 20% of the average annual operating cost. Of course, we spent a lot of time over the last 18-plus months talking about what exactly is fund balance, what should count, what shouldn't count. And for the purposes of this presentation, fund balance is the amount that is not obligated for future uses. Therefore, if you take our receipts from June 20th of last year and you subtract from our end-of-year June 30 audit amount, we have about a negative $1.6 million functioning fund balance. To meet our goal, we'd be at about $15.5 million, and we're going to need to put away about $17 million to reach that goal and come out of that deficit. It was our plan to set aside $250,000 a year for our reassessment reserve, which we did at this time last year, as well as a beginning this year, $300,000 capital, not capital, I'm sorry, fund balance appropriation, to actually start taking money and sticking it in the bank to start turning the trend around. The graph line shows you that we are turning the trend around. It's going to be a slow and arduous process, but I do believe we're turning the corner. Ms. Vanderheide and I anticipate putting at least $1 million back in the bank this year, and we're going to strive for about $1.5 million will be our goal. But we do feel fair, do feel fairly confident about putting at least $1 million back in the bank this year, and quite frankly, I think this time next year, we should be doing an equal amount at least. We still continue to pay down our debt. We have an annual debt service of about $5.5 million that's mostly, well, not mostly, that amount is directly related to the school bond retirement. We've got until 2030 to pay that off, so that's a number that's going to be in our budget for the foreseeable future. We're down to $51.2 million of outstanding debt just four years ago.
On the high school.
That's just the high school. $51.2 on the, on the high school about four years ago, I think that number was at about $81 million. Our capacity, now, it sounds like a lot of money, it is a lot of money. But if we had to borrow money, we still have capacity. We could go back to the market and have a bond issuance or borrow money for other reasons, like we did last year with the Master Lease program, we borrowed about $5 million. Our capacity is $146 million. So there is, if there were reasons this community needed to borrow money, we do have that. Here's a graphic representation of debt. Blue line. Yes, sir.
Back to that slide. What is, because we used to track it pretty close, Kim. What is our total debt service now? You said the $51.2 is on schools. What is that total debt service? We were reducing that pretty rapidly over the last several years, and then we borrowed about $5 million this past year, so I'm sure it went back up some. But what is that, what is that total?
It's over, it's around $90 million.
No, he means annual debt service.
Oh, annual debt service.
No, I mean total debt.
Total debt. Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
The principal, the principal that we owed debt on was about $80, $90 million.
Yeah.
It was, I thought it went forward, it was around $80, well, it was, but it kept coming down. We got out of it.
Now, $90 is probably both, the interest and principal, P and I.
Okay.
Yeah, we reduced it all.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah. But I can use.
Yeah, principal only was $84 million, I think, in 2016. So it's come down tremendously.
I don't want to get into this now because we just presented, we like to look at a lot of things in here, but I do have one comment. Let's don't lose sight when we see where our debt capacity is. The thing that we're okay to grab a large bunch of money because you're still going to have the ability to pay, and we're running an extremely tight budget, so our ability to pay on a big note doesn't exist.
Yeah, I would, I will clarify to say, you can borrow more money as long as you raise taxes to pay back.
Like that credit card, $25,000.
That's good.
And you can't hardly pay the minimum.
Yeah, you got the authorization, you just can't pay the minimum.
That's right. A little bit. It's a household budget.
Here's a different representation of our outstanding debt. The blue line is the school bond debt. Also in there is landfill bonds, which will run out in the next 24 months. Lease revenue bonds, moral ops, and then the big blue line that looks like a mountain is our total debt.
How much would that save us? You're talking about they'll be paid off in that amount of time?
It's about $315,000 for landfill.
Landfield.
A year.
What was it, did you say was another one that was 2020?
That's the only one that's imminent.
Okay.
The big one's 2030.
2030.
Yeah.
Of course.
You know, this time last year, we talked about a lot of things that we were going to do, and I want to give you just a very brief report on what we have gotten done. We have moved forward with implementing a performance evaluation system. It's in its final weeks before being released and getting going inside the organization. We do continue to pursue two new compactor sites. We're getting close to acquiring property for one, and are getting closer on a second. We also have a third compactor site that is, I think you guys are getting closer, Mr. Hicks and Mr. Farmer, on the third site to replace the Blair Store site. We did move forward with any new public relations initiatives. We did move forward with our community economic development study. That is underway right now. There's a member of the IDA and other RIPA members and others that are part of the group that are working with the city and the DAM regional foundation to create a new economic development strategy for the community. We did implement and have done extremely well and are seeing the fruits of our solid waste assistance team in both enforcing and educating about our solid waste system. The Victory Academy is open. We got that rehab this time last year, and it is, I guess, did not break since the first day of school. We pursued a conversation about eliminating our fuel station, to see if we could save money on that. We have, as recently as last week, determined that that is going to be a cost-saving move and beginning in, on July 1, we will be getting on board with the state contract so that our sheriff's deputies and others can purchase fuel at a multitude of places and not just use the gas pumps behind the courthouse. We have centralized our IT internally, but we weren't able to accomplish our centralized purchasing initiative with the schools. What we found out was the schools are doing a pretty good job now, and we dug into, to see if there was a way to realize some cost benefit there. It did not, it didn't materialize. I probably should, I'm going to take off the desktop printers, that's more of a pet peeve than a real accomplishment. It is happening slowly. And then investigating our jail options over the long term. That continues, mostly as part of our conversation of future jail and courthouse complex, and I have had a conversation with Blue Ridge Regional Jail Authority within the last three weeks to start talking about what would a relationship look like in the future to be a full member of that facility. We're also extremely pleased that it took us two years, but we feel very, very good about where our CSA program is. That is the super majority effort of that and success. Accolades good to Cheryl Roswell, who has finally wrestled that tiger by the tail and really understands how best to administer those funds. Mr. Hicks is now the chairman of that group, and all those board members have worked very hard to get their hands around how we administer the CSA program at these spaces. And there's a wonderful article that Haley did, Hallie did, a few weeks ago about that program and how it saved up $2 million a year. We've also seen good success in the control of our convenience centers. We're seeing our tonages go down, we're seeing cleaner sites, our residents find it a more friendly and pleasant experience. We are controlling the waste and abuse, and we're going to continue to work on this, we're going to, and later in the presentation, I'll tell you about some of the ways that we're going to continue to improve that experience for our citizens and realize better costs. I've got back and say, and you're going to hear about this tomorrow in the email, but Mr. Hicks led, or I should say, Mr. Butch Joyce, our consultant, led a training session yesterday from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. at our landfill for the guys that work in the hole. And he has already seen that our tonnage, our compaction, is increasing to, what is it, Richard, about 1,350 tons per square yard?
1,378.
1,378 tons per yard. Our, is it yard?
32% increase.
Is it yard? We measured by square.
Pounds per cubic yard.
Cubic yard. Pounds per cubic yard, that's, like you said, 32% increase in compaction. That is extending the life of our landfill by 32%. That is huge accomplishment, but we're doing some really good things in solid waste. We did our first employee satisfaction survey, which we found to be very successful. It gave us the understanding of where we need to focus some of our efforts, and the leadership team will be digging in deeper to about four or five subject areas that we'll broaden through that report. It's frustrating, and I've expressed this several times in the last week, that our General Assembly delegation is getting great accolades for all the great work they do in Richmond, and in effect, what they've done is force you guys to raise revenue. Our 5% raise for our school teachers is going to run the county of Pennsylvania $650,000. That is almost a 1.5 cent tax increase that our General Assembly has pushed down to local level, because they can't get the money for the raises unless we produce our piece. Same goes with our comp board system. There's in no way, shape, or form does the state adequately fund our comp board and our constitutional offices. We add over $8.7 million to our constitutional offices that aren't covered by the General Assembly. Another example is our law enforcement officers got a 3% cost of living adjustment this year. That will cost the county $104,000 to match that, to make everyone whole. So every time you hear that General Assembly is doing great things and using that tax money to further things, what you need to read into that is they're sending unfunded mandates down to the local level. And it is unfortunate, and it really hurts and ties you guys' hands as to what decisions you can make with your local revenue. Another example, which just got implemented, is a certain classification of officers got a bump in their pay. It's going to cost us $28,000 next year to cover that bump in their pay. And that's mandated, you got to pick that up. School Division last year got a $1.1 million contribution, additional contribution, I should say $1.6. I added what I recommended this year, which is additional $500,000. So it'll be $1.6 million over the FY18 school appropriation. The school board asked for about $4 million in local funding specifically to implement Phase 2 of their pay study, as well as make some pretty significant investments in maintenance. Quite a few roofs, I think there's at least three school facilities that we're looking for new roofs, and several other important capital items to maintain our facilities. Meanwhile, our school enrollment does continue to climb. We've had about 3.5% decline in school enrollment over the past five, five years, I believe, six years, whereas county funding has increased about 10% over the same period. So we've got this juxtaposition of declining, increasing needs and declining enrollment. And declining enrollment means decreased state support, which is why, one reason why local support has been increasing, because these, the school system is funded in a significant way based upon the average daily enrollment. Last year, we tried to look forward to a four-year plan for our budget. What we wanted to do is set a tax rate and understand our revenue to give our citizens an amount of consistency and expectations of tax payments over the reassessment cycle. Ideally, in my opinion, we would adjust our tax rate at reassessment time, and we would set it to get us by over those four years barring unforeseen circumstances. Well, we've had some unforeseen circumstances. We had, before we even got into this, this year, we had to, we lost our backup EMS provider, which cost us an additional, well, more than $400,000 on an annualized basis that we didn't budget. We lost our pet center operator, which also cost us a similar amount on a annualized budget. So we experienced a big hit very, very quickly before we got into this four-year cycle. That being said, there's still merit to continuing on this four-year horizon. We've adjusted, and you'll see on page, page five of the budget message, we've made some adjustments to our four-year projections to give us an understanding of where money needs to go in the coming years. And it also shows the difference between what we did in FY18 and what we've been able to do so far in FY20. For example, last year, we had budgeted $250,000 for reassessment. This year, we're recommending zero. And we're doing that because we owe it to our citizens not to increase taxes. So same thing with capital reserve, we're not recommending any additional contribution to capital reserve. We are recommending that we continue investment prior in rescue. If this budget is approved as presented, fire and rescue contributions will be about $1.5 million more than they were in FY18. We also are able to continue our plan for employee recruitment and retention, which is continuing with our emphasis the last three years of adjusting pay based upon the consumer price index of the Bureau of Labor Statistics, which this year is 2.1, last year it was 1.8. And we also are able to finish our three-year phase-in of the pay study implementation. Those two items combined are about $540,000. Moving, or segueing into more departmental service-type conversation. We do continue to struggle in our fire and rescue service particularly, particularly with our emergency medical service response rates. We have four departments that continue to be below 50% of catching their calls, and that is of concern, and Mr. Smith and I talk about that at least monthly, if not weekly in some cases. But this is an ongoing concern of ours. It is, in my opinion, the scariest and largest financial and service burden that the board supervisors is going to face over the next handful of years. I also believe that the financial stability of this organization is directly related to this chart. As departments are unable to make their calls, we step in. And right now, we're stepping in with a paid backup provider, and that backup provider is providing three 24/7 ambulances in the county right now, at a cost of about 3/4 of a million dollars, 800,000. We do continue to have great economic development wins. You've seen this chart several times before. I won't go into it, but when we go into our community meetings, we certainly want to emphasize the great work that's going on in economic development. Many great things, as you all know, on the cusp of happening. And we continue to invest in this program. Last year, we put away $1 million toward our incentive fund, which is not just for incentives, but also used to match grants with the tobacco commission and do other economic development projects like build shell buildings. This year, we're recommending that we put us, put away $750 toward that fund. Even with this 750 additional appropriations this year, we're still slightly underwater for what we know is coming down the road, but certainly, I believe, barring unforeseen circumstances, by this time next year, we should be well in the black in our economic development. Our convenience center changes are working. We're super proud of everyone that works in our solid waste department, especially Mike Waller and his crew that are on the collection team. They have done a fantastic job, and Mike has, if I had a UGP award, he'd get it for the last six months, because he's really been kicking butt, and citizens see the difference that this house has made. We plan to phase in additional staffing in the coming 12 months at Old Mayfield and Kentuck. Both of those are problematic sites. They are exactly like 622 and Mount Herman and Mount Cross were six months ago. Especially at Old Mayfield, which is giving, in fact, Richard showed me today, he told me not to say it in front of Mr. Davis, but we got some North Carolinians coming across the border and really messing us up at Old Mayfield. My comment.
Old Mayfield, you mean Kentuck.
I'm talking Old Mayfield. I'm sure we had.
Old Mayfield is not in my district.
That's wrong. Well, my point was that we got.
If it's in my district, I'll go right down there and set up a little surveillance myself.
My point is, there's a bunch of Tar Heels coming to Old Mayfield.
That's not very good.
That's funny.
I know that it is.
That's funny.
I agree, we got two up here now. Thank you. Pardon me, I was thinking about numbers that I'm not very happy with. Go right here, sir.
So we plan to continually gradually closing the compactor sites. We have a training and educational initiative that would take many, many, many months, consider it the whole next year, slowly working in the improvements that we've made at the five pilot sites to additional compactor sites throughout the county. Meanwhile, we continue to look for ways to offset the cost of county citizens. We know that we've got 100 years of life plus in our landfill. We know that we can never fill that landfill up at the pace we're going, and we also know that our citizens are asking for relief from the cost of that activity. The only way to do that is increase the amount of tonnage that goes in the landfill and make sure the money that comes across the scales is not Pennsylvania county citizen money. So we're investigating several alternatives right now, including working with Henry County to bring a portion of their waste stream into our landfill, which will realize additional revenue not from our Pennsylvania county citizens. I continue to hope that within 36 months, when some of these garbage hauling contracts come up, that we're going to be able to get some additional municipal and county rates from border counties, border localities into our landfill, and at that time, we should be able to significantly reduce the month, annual solid waste feed to our households. Without that, though, we are, we're stuck where we're at.
I have some questions about that. If that was to ever transpire, those funds could flow into the general fund, not the enterprise fund, correct?
Not really. No, anything that comes across scale, house, is going to stay in the landfill fund. Now, what will change is that the amount of revenue we have to get from the tax bill or from the fee bill will go down, and what increases is the amount coming from Henry County. But we can't supplement revenue coming across the scales and automatically shoot it to the general fund. We can do cost allocation to the general fund, but that would not be a significant amount. It would not be enough to offset any real cost to the taxpayer. Here, where the relief comes to the taxpayer, is completely in the fee, and we certainly hope that, I hope, two years from now, and maybe three, that we're able to revisit that $120 fee and bring that down. We also are very, we get a lot of calls about recycling, and we are working hard to improve our recycling initiatives. I think we have now 11 cardboard recycling sites, and everywhere we put one of those boxes, it fills up. We've increased from once a month to once a week, I think, at Mount Herman, because that thing fills up in no time. And we're looking at other options. That was one reason we were in Henry County a few weeks ago, is they do a really good job with recycling, and we wanted to learn more about how they do that. We also want to go through our system and make sure our sites are efficiently laid out. I know that when I go to my site that I use, if there's one, two cars in there, nobody can turn around, nobody can get out. There's some simple fixes we can do that would improve circulation and improve the experience of dropping off your trash. And Braswell is probably going to be the first one that has a major redesign. This is a schematic that shows how we would have one-way traffic going through Braswell. The canisters in the middle are, they're recycling, Richard?
Yeah.
So we would have recycling opportunities as you pull in, you pull in and go right or you go left first?
I'd go right, and then circle back around by the old doors.
So you turn into the right, you have recycling on your left, you have a compactor on your right, you can circle around, open top, hit the open top on your way out, and you don't have people basically diving in to our, to our sites and having a hard time backing out. This is, this is the ideal layout. We're not going to be able to do this at every site anytime soon. There are some very minor modifications at several sites we can make to improve traffic flow. For instance, the Mount Herman site, all we need is some asphalt around the back end of that, and we can have circular flow at that site. I'll use mine, for example. All we have to do is cut a hole in it and have people coming in one way and going out the other, and we will completely change the experience of that. And there are many, many other sites, the very minor modifications can improve the experience. We know, and we hear you loud and clear, that we've got to make sure we're raising as much money as possible for the pet center. I've met with Mr. McLaughlin twice this week, talking about fundraising, and I'll tell you, he is, he is out of the gate, and he is working, he had a fundraiser this past weekend in Van. And he has a schedule of, I think, eight or nine events between now and June 30. One interesting event or fundraiser that he's doing, which has just.
See him?
Has just come to fruition now, is he just got a load of eight tiny dogs, like that one, that's one off from California, and he's selling those dogs, I guess, for $100. The point is, we are exchanging big dogs for little dogs. We don't have little dogs. Little dogs bring different people into our center, and they bring money. People will pay for a toy, what would that be, a miniature pen, printer? They'll pay $100 for that. They won't pay $100 for a pit bull. In fact, yeah, just like somebody taped a pit bull. So he's doing some really creative things, including moving some of these dogs up into the northeastern United States, where not only we're able to get rid of them, we're getting paid when they get spayed and neutered, $45 a head. So we're doing some really creative things that involve the movement of animals. We're also planning some major events in 2020, and I've listed some of those there. There's $150,000 of revenue budgeted for fundraising at the pet center for FY2020.
Of course.
Yes.
Right slide. On the right side. I've had two people ask me this, and I don't know the answer. Do we microchip these dogs?
That is the policy, yes.
How much does that cost?
A little less than four dollars a dog.
Okay, they must have understood, because they told me four-hundred-and-fifty dollars. Four-hundred-and-fifty dollars.
I might tell me, I don't know where that number is. I think Matt left a testament point out of one of his-
I love to jump a point out.
We'll direct all those calls to Matt. Four-three-two, two-seven-nine-one.
Two-seven-nine-one.
Did you do a correction on that one? It concerns me a little bit that you import dogs from California, because they, I'm going to make sure not to.
We're bringing in progressive animals. We're getting rest of them.
Conservative, conservative.
But it's a- I don't know that job, but it just tickles me to think about these dogs coming across the country.
They'll be demanding services.
They have very high expectations. So, we've been talking about the jail for a while. As you know, we're deeply into a study of building into a jail, where would go, how big would it be, how much will it cost? And I've talked to you about, we are currently in very preliminary conversations with Blue Ridge Regional Jail at the moment, to how we might partner with them going forward to minimize our capital costs in the future. Today, we have a jail that has anywhere from a hundred-and-ten to, or a hundred to a hundred-and-ten prisoners in it today. Our capacity, as you know, is thirty-six. It costs us about a hundred-and-five dollars a day per inmate to operate that jail. We also have forty to fifty inmates at Blue Ridge Regional Jail. We have a great deal of them. That was struck before I got here, but we spend twenty-six dollars a day for those inmates. That does not mean we can empty our jail and run everybody as a Lynchburg and just pay twenty-six bucks. That's not what I'm trying to convey. What I'm trying to convey is, there's got to be a sweet spot somewhere. And I don't know that we've ever sat down and done the math to say, we optimize our expenses by having X amount here, or no more than X amount here, and at least X amount there. We don't know exactly what that number is, but it's a number we need to understand so that during this interim period, before we do build our own jail, we are getting by at an optimal expense rate. Also, in this budget related to jail, the only new position in this budget is someone to help primarily our sheriff's office and our finance department recoup some outstanding reimbursement filings. Ultimately, once we get our heads around that, transition this person to also helping our emergency medical responders with their billings so that we can maximize the amount of recruitment, recoupment they're getting on DMS and rescue bills. That's about a, what is it, fifty-seven thousand dollars? All-in position. And we certainly expect recoupment of that salary plus, plus some additional revenue. Here's what we've been spending at Blue Ridge Regional Jail the last few years since 2014, basically hovering around five-hundred grand a year. And that's basically what we have budgeted this year. Kind of the same slide, the same thing. What they have is economy of scale. I mean, they have over a thousand inmates?
Twelve-hundred, fifteen thousand.
Twelve-hundred inmates on a daily basis, and they have an economy of scale that we are unable to realize in our small facility. And then here, of course, is our first look at what a courthouse and a jail might look like on our premises, if we get to that, or when we get to that point. That shaded building on the right is the jail facility. We expect to have a full report to the Board of Supervisors within the next month or so, for mostly architects, and you will get all the details down and dirty, what we need, what our options are, what it might cost, and how do we plan going forward from here. Courthouse security is a relatively new thing, and we all have received calls about frustrations that some of our citizens experience being funneled into that one entrance. It is the best thing for the facility. It is required by the circuit court judge and can be an expensive proposition. We are nearing the end of our courthouse security fund. That fund will be, in my estimation, depleted in FY 2020. It brings in about sixty to sixty-five thousand dollars a year in court fees, but we're spending about double that in courthouse security. So, all of a sudden, this Board of Supervisors is faced with paying for courthouse security. That's nothing we've ever done before, but I anticipate by the last quarter of 2020, the jail security fund, or courthouse security fund, I should say, will be depleted.
What are we spending that on? Are we spending that on salaries?
Yes, sir.
In the past, we used that to redo the-
We did. And that's the spike in 2017. In 2018, we completed all the physical improvements-
What?
Which was fencing, barbed wire, controlled access, those type things. But now, we're basically salaries is the supermajority of what comes out of that.
Is it mandatory by a judge, or why do you have to walk all the way down to that end of that side, walk come all the way back, keep your footsteps midway? I mean, there's got to be a reasoning, but what's the reasoning? That's the complaint I hear, is you have to walk all the way down the road, come all the way back at the hill. Who would have been in that side entrance? It's a long way.
I've never had that asked that way.
I think that would satisfy a lot, because every night when I go out, that's the way I go out, and there's people fussing in front of me going in, because you have to get in and turn around and come all the way back up the street. Yeah, it is. They barked them off.
Yeah, and they did that to funnel, is to control the flow of people.
But what if you just did it halfway? I mean, how many people's come there at one time?
I think it's a security concern. I think they have a camera on that corridor, and I think they want to keep an eye on the people coming up. But that might be an option.
I've never had that.
Fifty feet's better. You want to extend it to them? Yeah, that's a long way down there.
Are we not eligible to continue to collect?
We are collecting. We're just not collecting at the pace we're speaking at. Yes.
How come we're having to pay so much in salaries? Or, I mean, are they just paying the guys that are on the machines, or what's it?
Some bails?
I don't know. Court house, bails, I don't know.
Just, just-
Just security.
And the meeting.
And the meeting.
All the meetings. And at thirty-six meetings, we have two deputies at each meeting that make thirty dollars an hour, and that was set by the judge.
So, we got it. So, when we meet, there are two deputies at thirty dollars an hour guarding us, there are two at the checking station, thirty dollars an hour, checking people.
And two every day, ten hours a day.
So, when we meet, it's a hundred-and-twenty dollars an hour.
Same thing with the planning.
Same thing with planning, BDA. Yes, sir. There are some things that you guys wanted in this budget that are not in here, but we have some money to make some decisions on. This is the list, and I'm sorry, this is slightly out of bounds. This number is actually nine-hundred-and-seventy-eight thousand dollars, I just called that a stick when I looked at it. But basically, you've got a million dollars' worth of unfunded initiatives that you all have talked about doing in the past several months, that we have, what we have done is set aside four-hundred-and-eighty thousand dollars in contingency. That is in your contingency line right now. We recommend there be a minimum of two-hundred-and-thirty-five thousand dollars in contingency. We budgeted two-forty in eighteen, uh, two-thirty in eighteen. We budgeted two-forty in nineteen. So, we split the difference, and we're saying, we need to keep at least two-thirty-five in contingency to have some amount of cushion in this budget. So, that means you've got about two-hundred-and-forty-five thousand dollars to fund this million dollars' worth of things. And I'm later going to recommend that a finance committee meet a week from today, and certainly, this is where we start those conversations. We'll come back to that a little later. So, actually, we'll get into it right now. So, here's our schedule going forward. It continues to be extremely frustrating how compressed the schedule is, but we're up against the honor rule, Mr. Vincent Shorter, and his bill machine has to produce the tax bills. So, we have got to give him enough reasonable time to get those things done. Today, what we're asking you to do is to advertise these budgets in the newspapers so that we can begin the clock-ticking process, working toward adoption of this budget by advertising what you're saying is, we are not going to spend a budget, I should say, more than what the county administrator has proposed. You can always go down. The budget, or the advertisement will be in the paper on the thirteenth, which is a week from yesterday. On the fourteenth, Mr. Scares has agreed to call a finance committee meeting at four o'clock, and we are going to allow, as we always do, an opportunity for constitutional officers and outside agencies to present their requests to you, and also use that opportunity to have our first conversations about these requests that are currently unfunded. We have scheduled four community meetings for the administration to go out and present this proposal. They are at the four high schools, and right outside this door are some flyers. Feel free to text some with you and pass them out that articulate the day, time, and place of each of those community meetings. On March twenty-eighth, we will have a call meeting, which is three Thursdays from now, to have the official public hearing, to receive comment from the citizens. And then on April fourth, we will adopt a 2020 budget. So, at this time, if there are any remaining questions or elaborations you would like to have put on the table, we are certainly here to do that.
Any questions from the board?
Yes, sir. Is the state mandated six-hundred-and-fifty thousand for the teachers? Is that in the budget?
So, we didn't have the real number until we actually, until after we sent this to you Monday. We put in five-hundred. We learned the next day that that number was close. Tracy's here. What's your number? Sixty?
So, it is, it will be?
So, five-hundred, I've been sitting there, but not sixty.
How about employee cost of living?
Two-point-one percent is in there, and three percent for law enforcement is in there.
That's all I have to say.
Any other comments? Questions?
Other comment, the general fund, we can spend, worries with, it gets worse all the time. One-point-six negative, that's really got us in a bad position. It's basically no savings.
Yeah, but it's turning around. I mean, I agree with you, Mr. Barber. It is, should be, an item of concern, but at the same time, you know, I feel like we're on the right route. I feel like we've got the train on the right track. It just takes a long time to make that turn. And I think we're going to see that on June thirtieth of 2019, that we're going to put at least a million dollars back in the bank.
To me, that'll be our number one priority, because, I mean, it's like going to a house and check the check. You don't ever know what something will happen. That's scary.
It is. The saving grace is, unless we, as long as we never change our tax billing process, it will never catch up to us, because we're always going to have that last bit of next year's money in this year's, so it's a, it's a dance. But as long as we keep dancing the way we've been dancing the last few years, we should be okay. But the unfortunate part is, if something happens and you need five million dollars, we're going to the bank. We're not going to our bank account. We're going to go borrow, and we can't produce five million dollars.
But how do we pay for it?
Incrementally. That means you would have to raise taxes incrementally.
That's a whole lot. I don't see any revenues extra. Do you pay debt service?
There's no extra revenue in this budget. I agree with that. We're very lucky, and we should all pat Cheryl on the back. We budgeted for the worst in CSA, and we ended up getting the best. The difference therein is worth several pennies on the tax rate. And that's why we're able to get through this budget, in my opinion, why we're able to get through this budget and still make our commitments to the schools, to the volunteer farmers, to folks, to the employees, and to others, because that, because CSA is no longer driving our decisions.
But Mr. Blackstone knows this well. What if they come back in three months and make us up the contribution? If that happens several times with CSA?
Well, the thing with CSA over the years is, one year, they came in after we budgeted and asked for six-hundred, sixty thousand dollars more. Then another year, but now, and I give, Ms. Bob was doing a tremendous job of weeding that thing down. But that CSA budget was just, they were hammering us every year. Coming back after we budgeted additional dollars, they would come back and say, and we didn't have a choice. We had to give them one year six-sixty, another year two-hundred and-
Three-some.
Yeah, several years. So, we talk about we're saving two million dollars. Let's not get excited. I'm excited about what Ms. Bob was doing, but that thing was exploding-
Yes, sir.
-as far as the expenditures.
But in relationship to CSA, that's one reason we had those situations, was it was not, it did not have good policy and procedures-
Yes, sir.
-set in place. So, we were paying out a lot of stuff that-
We probably shouldn't have been paying.
Probably shouldn't have been paying out. And, you know, the Victory Academy and some of the other things that occurred within the school system has helped bring that number down too.
Yes, sir.
So, I mean, it's a combination of efforts that have put this-
Yeah, we got a lot of people paying attention.
Ms. Bob's done an unbelievable job, and Mr. Hicks is working with that also, so.
Between Mr. Hicks, Dr. Jones, and Cheryl, and the folks surrounding them, we have all attacked that problem, we all have won.
And, you know, I hope you're correct that come June thirtieth, we see a million dollars added to the general fund. I really hope that turns out to be true, and we'll certainly be able to thank CSA for that. We also will be able to thank CSA for covering the shortfall with the pets.
Any other questions from the board? I would like to say thank you to Dr. Jones, Miss Stan, doing a great job, once again. One thing, though, it's too bad they left. Why are we having a decline in the student, is it because of economics in our area? I just throw that out there. I was just wondering. What do you think? Were you hearing anything from them? Because I-
Yeah, we have an aging population.
Okay. All right, the next one is the-
Less people have legs.
Okay, the auditor. Well, that leaves me out. The auditor recommendation that we had come in, sit where I jump on, you remember that particular number?
No, sir. It's a frustration with me that auditors don't give us more direct comment on those type things. And I don't know that they gave us any direction other than the goal of twenty percent.
Okay. And the merchants' capital tax, Mr. Warren brought that up. We found out, what has been the decline in that hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollar-
So, I wrote it wrong in your, in your draft. What you have now says machinery and tools. So, that is a typo on my part, and I corrected that for today. However, merchants' capital did go down. It was just a, less than two thousand dollars. So, we lost forty thousand in merchants' capital. And we did have some changes in the way we taxed merchants' capital several years ago that may have an impact on that, but it's machinery and tools that's the people, which had a hundred-and-fifty-three.
The amount of industry that we're telling people we're bringing into the county, why is that dropping?
Depreciation schedules on this equipment, it drops like a stone. When you've got, yeah, and plus, they're not paying yet. The ones that are coming in, you know, we're, we're only collecting ten percent on the hundred percent bill. Plus, if you've got fifty industries, and they're all invested in equipment, that's fifty industries that are on a depreciation schedule versus two or three that are adding to the two. So, depreciation's, and it has been everywhere, everywhere. That's a scary number, all of this type of equipment.
I think one thing, too, with big equipment, I think they understand better the taxing process, what codes it. So, they try to not, I mean, the purchase of equipment doesn't happen in October, November, December. The largest sale happens in the world just happened. They wait till after January first to get in for a year.
And thank goodness we avoided an attack on machinery and tools this year that drove assembly. It would have been tremendous, they hurt us down. They're trying to revalue it, not based upon its market value, but based on its purchase price, so people could basically buy stuff at pennies on the dollar in bankruptcy. in bankruptcy, then we would never see the value. But it failed.
Well, Mr. David Robinson, good point, I haven't looked into it, I forgot about it. How come when Robinson Cox and Palmer does the audit, their number is different, I mean, way different numbers? We're showing after this budget, one point six million, that ain't what they said the bottom number was?
Yeah, they're showing, they're showing eighteen point five.
Well, didn't they show the reality number, not count the prepayment?
What he's doing is basically saying, if you were to take what you bring in in June, which was over twenty million dollars this past year, and you say, okay, we're gonna assign that amount of money, it's in your pocketbook, it's right here, but it's really for this coming budget. If you were to assign that, your budget, your actual dollar figure would be negative six, one point six million dollars.
This gets back to Vincent's shoebox example, if you remember. He said, if we took that money, put it in shoebox, put it on the shelf, you know, this would be your true fund balance. And that's what we're doing, we're saying this money's not available to spend because it's obligated to next year.
So, at June thirtieth, and that's our, that's our gauge, because you can't do it all the time, because that is a moving target. I mean, we're constantly getting money in, and we're spending money out. So, at June thirtieth, when the dust settles on that day, they look at that number, and we have eighteen point eight million dollars. They don't say, and we could ask them to assign that figure, but at this point, we really don't want them to do that until we get into a better position.
What, does this affect our bond rating by having that low of a general fund balance?
So, as long as it meets our financial management policy, which right now requires us to have fifteen million dollars, um, end of the day...
So, no matter if it's prepayment or the real...
They're not specified.
But in fact, Mr. Palmer, in order to have a true accurate number, even with the shoebox analogy, you would have to be able to project all the income you're gonna receive from July the first through December the thirty-first, excluding revenue that comes December the first, in order to get a true picture of where we're at, you know, actually, by the day, because of just what you said, you've got an avid flow of money coming in from different sources. So, that's why we get by with this, as long as we don't change policies, it doesn't come out being efficient, because every, every month, you've got some revenue coming in. It's Blackstock.
We, the S is done, and that's why I don't think this is clear to the public. And what Mr. Smutman was saying is totally true, but we, we basically are now using a different definition for what, for what is our...
True fund balance.
True fund balance. And...
Makes us more cautious about spending that money.
Well, it, we change, Mr. Smutman, that's his take on things, and it's true. When we tax, and we get to taxes for the upcoming year, and you have to pick a date, and June thirtieth is a date that the auditors use, but let's not confuse the taxpayers and them to think we spent eighteen million dollars that we said we had in the reserve, because we didn't. It's still there, we're just changing the definition of what we have. The other thing is, we can spend that money, we can spend that eighteen million dollars, and as long as we don't change current policy, we would be, we would be okay unless something catastrophic happened. I don't think it's a good idea, and I have an agreement, I agree with that. The true thing that we need to watch in the budget is the ebb and flow of cash flow to make sure when the comp board pays, and the comp board pays a tremendous amount of money back to the county for those salaries, for the deputies, for the constitutional offices, for the inmates in the jail we give for deans and so forth, you have to look at when your lowest point is, and make sure you've got that cash flow in there to pay your bills. And that's right before you collect. It's right, it's probably, am I wrong, Vincent?
April.
It's April, and then it's probably around October. October's October. So, when are those lowest points are, you gotta make sure, it's like your checking account at home, you know that in October, you're not gonna get paid, so I gotta have enough money in there to pay insurance and out, payment, the truck payment, or whatever. It's the way it is. You look at those two months, and you make sure that you're safe for those two months.
Was our most cash flow last year? Didn't we just get under a million bucks in the bank?
We probably...
I thought we were down to around six or seven hundred there.
It was pretty low.
It was low.
Yeah, very low. I don't know if it's...
I don't wanna do, I don't wanna do this, because I don't know the exact number.
Would you say we did pretty low?
We did low, we got low.
And June thirtieth is your rose is...
That is your best day.
In the first quarter, first three years.
And Mr. Smutman's hadn't been to the state of Virginia long, he'd do things different. Now, there's, you're, when it comes to this, you do a good job, you're smart about it. I don't always agree with you, your analysis, but I understand where you're coming from. But in, in Virginia, in the past, and this is what we need to be careful about, when the state of Virginia gets into, into problems, they will hold money back. They will say, we're gonna hold your money thirty days or sixty days, or we're gonna just take you to cut positions, like what's in that sheriff's office, who has a bunch of positions that the county picked up? That's because the state just willy-nilly says, we don't have the money, we're not paying for it. Well, the sheriff still had to perform the same duties or even more, so the county picked those positions up. But if it, right now, we're in pretty good economic times, unemployment's like three point seven percent nationally. We need to be careful and start doing some planning, because we're not always gonna be in good economic times. We've gotta be ready when the, when things dip, and they will dip, that's just the way the economy works. We've gotta be ready and have some reserves in place.
Yes, sir.
And so, we need to control our spending. And every time that we put something in this budget that don't go away, and everybody wants to give people raises, I do, I know I do, I want them to see people pay fairly. We've gotten behind that all these years, but every time that you give money to the school system or pay any raises, you never reduce people's salary, I don't know, you may lay people off, but that money's in that budget from now on. So, one point one million dollars that we put in there to the school system last year is in there from last year. We didn't stop that, that's in the budget, and now we're gonna give them, and I'm not, I'm just using that as an example, five hundred thousand more, but that's gonna be for salaries? That's gonna be in there from now. You have to keep that in mind. When you buy a truck or a car, that price goes away, it's capital purchase, but when you start paying people more money, or putting something in the budget that can't be reduced over time, which I think anything could be reduced, sometimes you just have to do it, but those, what we're doing, we've gotta be careful and continue to let this budget escalate before it gets out of control.
Got any more comments? I have one last one, and that was this, that I don't understand, I would like to know, because I need a little education here. General Simmons sets this statement up, and they, they require a raise and all of, say, whoever, and then they don't, they don't fund this, and then we, the county, the locals are, are stuck with the, you know, pay tag. I never, I don't understand that, per se. They don't, they don't commit anything to the, to the corporates at all?
Oh, yes, they can commit significant portion, it's just not a hundred percent. And the good news is, so that we don't feel like that, it happens in forty-nine other states also.
Maybe more than fifteen years since I've been on this board.
That's not, that's not.
You've been here a long time. I've been here longer than that.
Well, that I know about. Well, in closing, because I'm gonna wrap it up, I gotta go to work tomorrow, and so, I do wanna compliment the county administrator for doing a good job, I do think it's a modest budget, and surely, there's not, everybody's gonna agree with it, and I expect that, because I like attrition. There's a reason for that, and we need attrition. And thirdly, I think it was well capped, not only was it, you showed the positives that we are, we're moving forward, but you also showed the negatives, and that's transparency, because there are some corporations that I know of firsthand that would never put in the negatives, it would always be the positives. And that tells me this is a healthy, functioning county. Most people don't agree with that, but, you know, that's, that's understandable, too. But I know when it comes to investing, there are certain, there are certain organizations that I know of firsthand, they wouldn't invest if they listened to a program set up like tonight, and you didn't come out and display your, your bad laundry, they wouldn't invest any money in your corporation at all. And if that's all they heard were the positives, then you wouldn't get it, you wouldn't get their support. So, I do appreciate that, and I do appreciate the opportunity that we're moving forward, and I do think that we still have more ground to conquer, especially this year, that I still feel that we're not really tapping where we really need to be. But I feel that we're moving forward slowly but surely, and I do wanna thank law enforcement for what they do, always have, do a great job. However, closing right here.
Right before you close.
Okay, okay, hold on a moment, but one moment, you go ahead, because I'm gonna get the last word.
I'm gonna give you the last word, but we do have, Kim needs to pass out the advertisement, and we need to get a quote of the board on whether to advertise next Wednesday. Again, this, this cap sheet, we're not going above this amount from here, Paul.
And so, there are two advertisements, there will be two public hearings, and they are scheduled for March the twenty-eighth. They will be in the Edwin O'Shield Building. Most of the time, they'll go down to the Educational and Culture Center, but this year, we didn't feel the need for that, since there is no tax increase involved in this. Typically, that's what really draws our crowd. But the first one is your school public hearing, and we will hold that one first typically. And the total of that budget is ninety-six million, thirty-one thousand, nine twenty-seven, and you'll notice on here that Tracy has given me her revenues, I receive those from her. She is having some software difficulties, so the increase to their budget, I've included instruction in instruction as of right now. The other figures will change somewhat, but the bottom total will remain the same. So, some of those categories, it'll be pretty, pretty close, so that will probably change as to what you will see in the newspaper, but I wanted you to be aware of what it will look like closely. And then the next one is the public hearing for the county budget, which does incorporate the school budget. You'll see education expenses of ninety-six oh forty-two, three fifty-six, which is a little different from your school budget, because it does include DCC. So, DCC is an educational expense as well, and that's why that figure is a little bit more. So, our total budget, including the schools, is a hundred and eighty million, eighty-six thousand, nine ninety-three. And like I said, in voting tonight, it just votes to advertise this particular budget, we cannot go over the bottom total of a hundred and eighty million, eighty-six thousand, nine ninety-three. You all can change anything you want, all during the month of March. We will not actually adopt this budget until early April, so you've got plenty of time to make some decisions on what you want to do.
Any comments from the board? I do apologize to the county administrator for overstepping my boundaries there. So, what's the nature of this pleasure, the board? This does require a vote, is that right, counsel?
Yes. Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to advertise this, but as presumed.
I have a first, the motion a little scarce, and I have a second by Mr. Warren. Any further discussion? Yes, sir, Mr. Blackstock.
Vaden, you need separate motions on these two budgets, or you...
Let's do separate motions, just to be clean. We need a motion on the school budget, and we need a motion on the full county budget. Can I make my motion to encompass this school budget?
Mr. Warren? So, we're voting on the school budget. Pardon my obtuseness there, I did not. I need a motion now for the school budget.
Mr. Scares just did that.
All right, you've made that, okay, so I don't need anything. Any more discussion, I can do that, can I, can I do that, and then we can have a vote?
Yes, sir.
Is that correct? No more discussion, thank you. All in favor, let it be known by lifting your right hand. Those are for this, those opposed?
Now, we need a motion for the full county budget. Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion, and we have the full county budget.
Advertising.
Advertising. I found it out, we got them assigned.
I have a motion from Mr. Warren. Advertising, I was gonna say addressing. Do I have a second?
I'll say.
I thought you would. We have a second by Ron Scares. Do we have any further discussion? Here none, all in favor, let it be known by lifting your right hand. Those who oppose?
Who has one answer?
Are there any other comments to be made from the county administrator?
Yes, sir.
Counselor?
Yes, sir.
I declare this meeting adjourned.